Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to call the annual town meeting for the town of Shasberry to order. My name is Tom Daley. I’m your moderator tonight. It’s been 32 years, I think. So as I say when I’m your moderator tonight, I’ve been your moderator before. What I’d like to do is ask you all to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have the Girl Scouts who are going to, with their Honor Guard, bring up the flag.
All right. Color Guard, attention. You’re already standing. Color Guard, please advance. In the center, Kylie. The flag of our country. Color Guard, honor the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, retreat.
And that was usually when I talk about asking for a moment of silence. It always has to do with the fact that we’re so fortunate. When we look at what’s going on in the world around us, that in fact, regardless of the divisiveness, or partisanship, or whatever else is going on in the world, in the community, in our community, in our government, we still have the opportunity to assemble like we assemble, like this. And this is where it really happens, is at the grassroots. We govern ourselves. That’s something that is near and dear to all of us. It’s easy to get complacent and forget about it. I just want to remind everybody to be thinking of that with a moment of silence. I’d also like for some special intentions for, we’ve lost a firefighter very recently. There was a, I believe, an automobile accident, or something, and one of our firefighters, Shelley Kuhn, lost his life yesterday. So I would ask that you also remember him in a moment of silence. The next item is going to be introductions. I’d like to start with our Select Board. Tim Skoggins, the Chair, first here. Next to him is Art Whitman, and then Tony Krulikowski. There are two more Select Board members, Ken Harrington and, who’s my next one?
Joe Barber.
Joe Barber. And they’re not, obviously, they’re not present tonight. Town Clerk is Marlene Hall, in the back. I don’t know if our Treasurer is here, Melanie Dexter. Reason that I want to go down through all of this, let me take just a break, is we’re essentially a volunteer government. Again, how we govern ourselves, and most of these people labor tirelessly throughout the year, without a whole lot of things. And I’m as guilty as anybody to forget to say thank you to them. This is one time of the year when their names can be spoken, and we have an opportunity to say thank you to them. Our zoning administrator is Shelley Stiles. I don’t know if she’s here. Our DRB Board, the Development Review Board, the Chair is Tom Huncherek, and the members are Michael Biddy, Michael Day, and Chris Panesi. We have a Planning Commission, Chris Williams, Mike Foley, Mike Chianowski. Our road crew, Foreman Steve Washburn, and then the actual crew, Tim Gully, Ron Jennings, Kyle Legacy, Eric Sanquist, and Dave Worthington. Our fire department, led by our Chief Joe Vatigan, and all the volunteers, which are many, many. Our State Rep, Alice Miller. And I’m not saying the names of all of our listers, auditors, trustees, justices, appointees, committee members, and a lot of other folks who helped to keep our town running. I left someone out. Richard Bump is taking the minutes. He’s usually here, keeping an eye on making the notes, so we know what we did. What I would like collectively is, any of the town officers that are here, please stand up, because we’d like to give you a round of applause. Thank you all for the time that you put into keeping our town running the way that it does. Okay, some housekeeping. Fire exits. There are fire exits in the front, there, over here, in the back. When the time comes that we are going to debate, what we’ll do is, I will ask for, I’ll state an article, ask for a motion for the article, a second, and when that happens, then we open up the floor to debate. When you want to speak, you raise your hand, I’ll call on you. Use the microphone. We’re live with, are we live, not live?
No Internet.
No Internet? Oh, bummer. Oh.
It’ll be on TV tomorrow.
Well, okay. So.
It’s still broadcast.
Oh, man. Think I got a new jacket, just, oh, boy. It will, it’ll be on TV at some point, so it’s important that you use a microphone, and when you’re, when I recognize you, say your name, come up and use the microphone. Direct all questions and comments to the Moderator. Any non-residents can’t vote. Typically, when I started this years and years and years ago, I was always told that I had to find everybody who wasn’t a registered voter, and we had a spot, which actually had red tape, or yellow tape around it, and we had them all sit over there. One year, my four kids had to be there, because they, none of them were registered, they were little. But I dispense with that. Anybody who is not a registered voter, you know you can’t vote. So when the ayes and nays are going, you have to be quiet. And anybody sitting next to a non-registered person, remember the elbow, okay? The sharp elbow, so that they don’t vote. Okay, when we take up an article, okay, I told you the motion, second, debate, and we’ll vote. You can amend an article just by simply saying, hey, I propose an amendment. If the amendment is seconded, then we debate the amendment. An amendment, an article can be amended a second time, but no more. So you can have an amendment, to an amendment, to an article. If we ever end up like that, we then work backwards. We vote on the amendment to the amendment, then the amendment to the article, then the article. This is mostly stuff that, it never happens. It’s moderators and folks like myself say, oh, wow, that’s really good, but it actually never occurs. If you’re wondering, you’re trying to do something, you want to speak on something, or make a motion, or something like that, and you’re not sure what to do, raise your hand and ask me. What has to happen tonight is that when everybody is done and they leave, they feel that they have in fact had their say, that they’ve gotten their answers with regard to what’s going on with our budget, with our governance, and that they, that you’ve had your say. And we stay as long as it takes. I will help you develop your questions, if that’s what needs to happen. I can’t take a position one way or the other, but I sure as heck can make sure that you all have an opportunity to get your thoughts out. Well, I think where I am actually is, I think it’s time for the, no. Hold on a second. I get all, on the floor. There we go. In our town report, there’s a warning for today’s meeting. Normally, I stand here and I read the warning, as many pages as it takes. In years past, what I’ve done is I’ve asked for a motion to dispense with the reading of the warning, and so I would entertain a motion if you all would like to have that happen. Motion’s been made, and there’s a second. Any discussion? The choices are, I can stand here and read it all, or we can vote to dispense with the reading and then move on. You ready to vote? All those in favor of dispensing with the formal reading of the warning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Alice Miller’s report I have. So our representative is going to come up and speak. Come on up, Alice. She’s always given a few minutes. Go ahead, seven or eight minutes.
I have something to say before you sit down. There’s one person you forgot, when you were recognizing town offices and volunteers.
I’m sorry, what?
You forgot Tom Daley.
Oh.
Let’s give him a hand. Tom is sick tonight, too, and here he is, holding the fort. He’s been a credible contribution to our town. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. I’m on the House Education Committee. Been there for four years. I was there for six years when I first started in the legislature. This is what’s happening in Montpelier. Not everything, but some. In education, we just worked on a special ed bill, learning that we’re spending $140 million more than maybe we should be on special education, and the reason for that is the incredible increase in the number of emotionally disturbed kids and autistic children. But we’ve had reports saying we’re spending too much. So our committee went to work, and we put together a bill that we think is good. It’ll provide more flexibility to teachers, less paperwork for teachers, it’ll get better service to our kids, and it’s got a long way to go. We just came out of our committee. Now it’ll go to the House floor, and then it’ll go to the Senate, and stay posted. We’ll see what happens. In budget adjustment, which is what happens every year, to make, to see who’s spent too much, who’s spent too little, and we kind of work out so that the budget comes out even. I’m happy to say that our Veterans Home in Bennington was given $445,000 to help balance their budget. In finance, in houseways and means, worked very hard on answering your request to please do something about our property taxes. Two-thirds of Vermonters pay by income, and the rest by property taxes. There’s an effort to make it 100 percent, have people pay 100 percent by income, but again, stay posted. One plan said that anybody making $47,000 a year or less would not pay any property taxes at all. That has changed. There’re going to be a lot of moving pieces to this. Again, it has to go through all these committees, but we’re working very hard to do something about controlling our property taxes. Gun violence has been a big issue in Montpelier, and I’m sure it’s a big issue in our communities, I know from tonight, I was talking to Hunter. Let me make it very clear. I’m in support of the legislation to provide more safety to our children in our schools. But I really believe deeply, and always have, in the culture of sportsmanship, of hunting in Vermont. We have very responsible hunters, and there is no attempt on any of our parts to do anything to take away your pleasure or your joy. The whole purpose of the bills in the House and Senate are to provide safety to our kids. When we found out, and by we, I mean the Governor, the Senate, and the House, found out that Jack Sawyer, a young man, was about to go into the Fairhaven Public School and shoot people, shoot kids, everyone just said, the time has come. We really have to do everything we can to make sure our children are safe. So look at the bills, S221 out of the Senate, H665 out of the House. Again, it’ll have a long way to go, and it’ll probably end up in conference committee, three people from each side, to settle the differences. Seat belts. I’m cutting this short, because Tom’s looking at me. Seat belts were, people couldn’t be stopped just because they didn’t have their seat belts on. Now we’ve changed that. You must, if a policeman sees that you don’t have your seat belt on, you’re going to get stopped, and you’re probably going to get a ticket. We had information, testimony, that clearly showed that we could save a lot more lives and prevent people from terrible injuries in Vermont if we did that. So we’re hopefully going to pass that law. I think I’m going to stop there and let you proceed with your town meeting. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. In this envelope is $800 million. It’s money that, I think it’s that much, maybe it’s that much, it’s a lot of money, of money that nobody’s claimed, that the Treasurer has. Make sure, I’m going to give this to the Town Clerk, Marlene Hall, to hang in the office. All these names are here. I had it separated out, so that it’s all Shasberry. Go through this list, go in her office, look at this list, and see if you have any money coming to you. Friend of mine did, she got 80 bucks. Some of these things are 200, 1,000, even more. So look at that. Thank you.
You took my notes.
Yes, I did.
With all the partisanship and everything like that going on, many times when I’ve had Alice up here, when we’ve gotten done, and as you all might know, Alice is a Democrat, and I’m always supposed to maintain, you know, be neutral. So there’s been times that I have had Alice up here. Art, could you come up here, please? Alice, come here, please. And I’ve been partial, because I’ve actually had times when I have given her a hug. Now, she is a Democrat. I had to find a Republican to hug all. This had to be my brother-in-law.
This brother-in-law of his and I, when we were little kids, used to walk home from the North Bennington School together.
Thank you, Art. Thank you, Alice. Thank you. Yes, question.
Yes, name of Mike Lilly. The only complaint I have is getting in touch with Alice Miller. I made various calls to the Sergeant-at-Arms. I called her number that was printed in the book many times, only to find out that whether it’s convenient or what, it’s the wrong number. So Alice Miller’s number on page 38 is wrong.
What’s the number that’s there on 38?
And while you’re looking that up, I’ve tried for two years through the Sergeant-at-Arms to get in touch with Alice Miller, and no response, no return calls, no nothing. So I don’t know how they vote on things in Montpelier without getting any input from their constituents and townspeople.
Probably an appropriate, you got her here now.
Yeah, that’s why I’m here tonight.
Don’t let her out through that door.
That’s why I’m here tonight. We’ve already had some discussion, but that’s because she approached me. I wasn’t going to approach her.
Okay, well now it’s your turn. You’re going to approach her by the time we get to the end.
Yep.
Yes, Alice?
He’s right. I was injured and I laid up for 12 days.
Well, it’s two.
The bird was very pressuring on a root, and I was like, oh my gosh, that hurt. So I am sorry.
Last year, I tried the same thing, and I got no results. Sergeant-at-Arms.
That phone number is right.
1515 is right?
It’s 1615.
Some little girl answers. I’m surprised she isn’t upset with you by now.
Here’s my number on page 38, right at the bottom.
Isn’t it 1615?
Yeah.
Alice, that says 1.
Oh, you’re right.
I’m right.
Mike, you’re right twice tonight.
Yes, I am.
Apparently you don’t call. 1615, sorry about that.
Well, I did, somebody will get it right now that we brought it here. I was in the deep here what I was trying to contact you for, but you already know about that.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, the next item we’ve got is going to be our Select Board report. Tim, you want to go ahead?
I am. Going to turn this, so I can see what I’m talking about. We got Alice, okay. Gosh, after all that frivolity, this is going to seem really boring. Our FY19 budget is up just a little bit, but we wanted to point out that for four years running now, we have, this board and this administration has kept the line on spending as best we could, and our FY19 budget is only just a little bit above our FY16 budget, and the same is also true of the tax rate. So we’re proud of that, because we’ve been, we think, making improvements to town government at the same time we’ve been holding, holding the line on spending. Next. While we’ve been holding the line on spending, we’ve done a number of things. Major overdue maintenance in the parks, which included resurfacing the tennis courts. The tennis court surface had been the same for 40 years. I don’t know if we can promise the one we put down will last that long, but they needed a new one, and we got it. We worked on the baseball dugouts that needed repair and painting. We dug a water well at Howard Park, so that we can provide drinking water to the sportsmen there, and to the athletes. We’ve increased capital spending on roads. We’ve established, every year now, we do a professional external audit of the town’s finances. We established an equipment reserve, and we’re on track from now on when we need highway equipment, new trucks, new graders, that that will come from money we’ve saved and not from debt. We’ve scheduled coming up very soon, long overdue maintenance on Cole Hall and improvements there. Remember that in 2009, the Select Board was looking into improvements in maintenance to Cole Hall, when the engineers that were asked to look at it said, you’ve got a bigger problem across the parking lot with the garage. And now we’ve been nine years trying to get the garage built. We’re going to get that done this year. And we’ve improved communications with a new phone system and a new website. There are some areas that required increased funding this year. Bennington Rescue Squad, I, you may have followed in the paper, that for a lot of years, they have been subsidizing their efforts for us through an endowment they had, through funds that they had. They have come to where they’re seeing the end of their ability to do that. That fund is running out of money, and they’re going to the towns looking for considerably more money than they’ve been asking for in the past. We used to give them $2,000 a year. We gave them $7,500 last year, and we’re up to $15,000 this year. Those kind of increases are significant, and we want to make sure that they’re warranted, and that we’re on top of what’s going there. We want to get involved with Bennington Rescue Squad. Tony Krulikowski has agreed to serve as, on the Board of Directors of Bennington Rescue Squad. He was elected to serve as a Board of Director, so he has literally got a seat at the table, so we can keep an eye on that and make sure that we’re providing that service, and we’re providing it in the most cost-efficient way that we can get. Community appropriations are up again this year. We assume when we put out our budget number that all the community appropriations that you will vote on tomorrow are approved. They usually are. We upped the money for hazardous tree removal. Our tree warden, Jim White, covered the town roads and identified hundreds of potentially dangerous trees that need to be dealt with, and we’ve upped our budget to deal with that. Fortunately, we’re getting a lot of help from Green Mountain Power in the trees that interfere with power lines, so we don’t have to do it all ourselves. And we continue to have to deal with PFOA testing and mitigation, nowhere near to the extent that places like North Bennington and Bennington are having to deal with that, The Public Works Garage is on track to be built in 2018. Site preparations are underway. We have demolished the two residences that we bought there, right on North Road, to make room for the transfer station there. Our requests for proposals for a general contractor have gone out, and the bid award will be on March 22. We’re opening the bids from the general contractors in a public meeting this Friday at Cole Hall, 2 o’clock. We here in Shasberry have been trying to kind of catch the wave of economic development activity that’s happening in southern Vermont. For quite a while, the southern Vermont economy has been in trouble. It’s still in trouble. Starting, really, it was really brought to all of our attention starkly in the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone Report of 2015, that started out saying southern Vermont is in trouble. And it turned out, to all of our credit, that that ended up being a call to action, and things have been happening since then. Wyndham County and Bennington County are coming together to create what’s called a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, SEDs. This is a thing, it’s essentially a mechanism whereby projects get approved, and projects that are approved by a SEDs have a chance of getting federal funding to work on improving the economy locally here. I’ve been an active member of what’s called the RED Group, the Regional Economic Development Group, that was formed in Bennington County to join with the committee in Wyndham County toward a two-county comprehensive economic planning zone. And also, Wyndham County already has an existing SEDs. They’re a few years ahead of us. I am serving also on their committee, looking at project review in order to gain, build relationships with the other county, and to gain experience on how this whole joint economic planning thing will happen. The Putnam Block development that’s happening in Bennington is an exciting development. It’s a public-private partnership. Eventually, it’ll be a $53 million development. It’s incredibly innovative and complicated, bringing together lots of different pieces of the funding puzzle. The really significant thing, I think, about that is that it’s largely coming from the community. It’s the college. community. It's the college and the hospital that came together and sought out the town leaders and said, "We need to do something in downtown Bennington. We're willing to put our own money into making this happen." And I think it's significant that the Phase One of this project, around $25 million part of it, which is largely the hotel and office space associated with the Putnam Hotel, has already got 75% occupancy rate, and it's not even built yet. So there's good reason to think that that's something that could help revitalize downtown Bennington. Another thing that's happening that I think is exciting is Governor Scott's Vorick Initiative, Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economic Development Collaborative. It's a statewide effort to try and attract people, visitors and residents, to Vermont based on our natural resources as, to help bolster the economy. And there's a local group in Bennington that is, that's being put together with the Chamber and some other stakeholders in the recreation business. I'm a member of that core group, and we're working to make sure that when Vorick comes out of Montpelier, that Southern Vermont is part of that, and that we get our say and we get some attention from that effort. And also, just, I wanted to mention this TrailFinder.info site. It's a state site for finding trails. And in working with various people at the Chamber and other places, it was more or less discovered. It exists, but local area trails have not been into it. We're getting those trails put into it, and that's something that we can, for example, put on our new website to show the kind of recreational resources that are available here. Our local government right here in Shasberry has been working on economic development, too. In particular, our Planning Commission, 2016, remember, the great bylaws rewrite? That was approved by the voters in March, and that's been in operation now for almost a year. And the intention there was to go through our bylaws, rewrite them, clean them up, and make them easier to use, and with the hope that it would make it easier for people to come here, start a business, buy a house, whatever. The Planning Commission, at the direction of the Select Board, looked into the feasibility of reopening the country store. I know a lot of us felt sad when the country store closed. Was there anything that can be done about that? I would refer to you to the report there. There's issues there. What really, more than anything, would have to happen for a country store to reopen would be community involvement. The big thing that the Planning Commission found when they looked into this is places where things like country stores have been kept alive in spite of adverse economic conditions, it's because the community got behind them and made it happen. The Planning Commission's been looking at trails as an economic engine for Shasberry. There are other examples. Chris Williams will tell me about. Was it Essex, New Hampshire? That... There's a town in New Hampshire that really revitalized their local economy by attracting people to the trails they had there. Pardon?
Jackson.
Jackson. Okay, Jackson, New Hampshire. And so, you know, we've got trails all through Shasberry, and we're looking at whether or not something like that could happen here. First thing that they suggested is maybe just improve the access to the town municipal forest. There's a 60 acres of municipal forest just off of West Mountain Road. The Planning Commission, we all did a hike up there to take a look at it, just to see what that was about. And, you know, asking the question, can promoting trails make Shasberry more attractive to visitors and residents? And we have redesigned our website to include a marketing section to attract visitors and residents to the area where we can put things like, you know, if we do develop trails, we can put things like the TrailFinder site, too, there, so people can look at Shasberry and see, you know, what kind of reasons they might have for wanting to move here. And that's my budget report. Are there any questions? Alan?
Talking about trails, we need a trail from Shasberry. Glastonbury is a fire tower. It's on a map, something like, there's no map in the city. Show to get to the fire tower, since we have to go up through Woodford along the long trail to get to it. There was some place on the Glastonbury that was easy to get to. People like hiking to fire towers.
Yeah, I've always, since I came to the area, the fact that the Appalachian Trail, which is such a well-known thing, is so close by. Yeah, I thought myself, the idea that you can hike from your yard to the Appalachian Trail through Glastonbury, the trail you're talking about.
Is there a trail?
There is a trail, yes.
Is it defined?
No, no. And it's not a public trail, and that's part of the debate that the Planning Commission and the Select Board is having about this, is how far can we go with this? Right now, there are trails. They're known to the people whose land they're on and their neighbors, and people allow their neighbors to hike on them freely. Will they be as welcoming to people with New York license plates, for example? So that's something that's part of this debate. Yes?
Is there a map of the trail up here in Shasberry?
Yeah, no. The only known map is at the Chocolate Barn. Sue Ancharak has it. She's shown it to me, but she won't let me walk out with it. Actually, no, she's shown it to me. But again, it shows old logging roads, and it's, like I say, largely private land, so it's, but they are there, and people like Chris Williams knows where they are and will show me every now and then. But no, there's not a general map. It's certainly not a public map.
You mentioned about the new garage. Who pays to tear down all the old buildings there? And where is the salt farm going, and how much is that costing?
The demolition of the buildings is part of the budget for the garage.
It's still costing money?
Right.
And then where's the salt farm going?
I don't have the map in front of me, but it's going in back... Help me out. Where's the salt shed?
The salt shed will be, as we drive in now where the transfer station is now, just to the left of the entrance driveway will be where the salt shed will be.
Do you have a price on that yet? Or does it mean in addition to the garage, taking tearing down the building, they're always in the budget, but that's still an additional cost in the operation of building a new garage?
No, all of that is in the budget for the garage. Line?
What, they're doing it for nothing?
It's in the budget for the garage. We're paying for it.
The Ancient Roads Committee studied the trails because we're looking for any roads that still might have, that now may have a right of way. And David Mass was part of that committee, and we collected a number of maps that showed the kinds of trails that you're talking about. So if we went back to the records of the Ancient Roads Committee, I think you're going to find some of the trails that you say don't exist on any sort of map.
Okay, good.
So that's something to look at.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll look into that. All right, Tom?
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Okay. The warning that we're operating on is on pages six, seven, and eight of the first section of the town report. It's a little bit different than what's up here, so we're going to move a little bit different. It's the same items, just they may be in different paragraph format and such. So Article One, under the Business section of our meeting. Article One, "To hear the reports of the town officers and take action thereon." This is always a funny article, because it's not usually necessary to vote on it. What we traditionally do is we will, what I would like to have is a motion from someone that we do hear the reports and that we do take action thereon, which would be, in effect, to accept them, not approve them, but to accept them. The reports that we're talking about are the reports that are contained in the four items, the four pieces of the annual report. So I'd like a motion to hear the reports of the town officers and take action thereon. It's been moved. Is there a second? Okay. Now we have an opportunity to debate, not so much debate as, are there any questions about what's going, how the reports are presented? Are there errors that anybody wants to point out, or questions that you have with regard to the reports? So are you ready to vote? All those in favor of hearing the reports, the town officers, taking action thereon, that is, and accepting them, please acknowledge by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article Two, "To determine, shall the Select Board members each receive an annual stipend of $500? Shall the Board of Auditors be paid a wage at the rate of $10.50 per hour? Shall the First and Second Constables be paid a wage at the rate of $10.50 per hour? Shall the Board of Listers be paid a wage at the rate of $10.50 per hour?" As presented in the warning, which is in this part of the town report, that is the sum total of Article Two. We can either move it as a single article, or it can be parsed down, separated down into going A, B, C, or D. You'd like to do it as a combined article? A second? Got a second? Any opposed?
Just for discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to separate out A. I think that the Select Board, even if it's a nominal amount, an increase of $100, we used to give our Select Board members the same amount that we gave the school directors, $800, and one member, we went through a very difficult economic time back in 2008.
Okay. What I've got is, I've got a motion that was made and seconded to treat it as a single article. You've requested that we not do that. Would the person that seconded and the person that made the motion be willing to withdraw the motion to parse it out, to separate this out?
Withdraw the motion.
And the person that seconded it?
She could just amend the motion.
Who was the one that seconded it?
I did.
Are you okay with it, if we just go back to where we are?
I think we should go forward with the motion. If she'd like to amend one item, I think that's the way to do it, amend it over with. You know, she can amend A to $800.
Well, I was going to suggest against $600.
$600?
All right, let me go backwards then. Restate the motion and the second. Darren, would you come to the microphone, please?
Yes. My point, I couldn't do this when I was on the Select Board. We did, as a Select Board, we chose to reduce the amount that was paid to Select Board members, again, during a really tough time. And it's not that times are fantastic. They're better now, and I just think that, as a town, we ought to recognize the kind of work that these Select Board members do. There are innumerable hours that you put in, day and night, and even if it's just a nominal amount, I think they deserve to have an increase and have that recognized.
So you would like to amend this article for A to B, compensating the Select Board members a stipend of how much? It's currently $500 proposed.
How about $650? You know, I would be open, but I just think it's something we ought to do. How does $650 sound?
Okay, do I have a second for that? Second's been made, okay. Currently before us, we've got an amendment that has been made that we're going to compensate the Select Board $650 annual stipend. How about some discussion? Debate? Do you want to vote on it?
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if it's a positive statement, but I know that there's an over $600 you have to pay it on your taxes, and we taxed it. Would that apply to this figure?
I didn't hear that one.
The question was below $600, if that's a...
No, no.
You reported $10.99 to show you pay people more than $600, but everything from zero on up is subject to...
I wanted to make sure everyone putting that...
Okay. All those in favor of, we're voting on the amendment, of amending the article that the Select Board members each receive an annual stipend of $650, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're back to our main motion, which consists of A, B, C, and D. Any discussion? Questions, amendments? And what we're dealing with is the Board of Auditors being paid a wage of $10.50 an hour, First and Second Constables a wage of $10.50 an hour, and the Board of Listers being paid a wage at the rate of $10.50 per hour.
It's a bargain.
Are you ready to vote on it? Yes. Ollie?
Hi, just to have clarification on something.
Got to come up. Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Hi, I'm Holly Dan, and I would like clarification of which personnel policy we are operating under. We have an old one, and we have one that's in legal review.
So there's the...
The old policy is currently in effect. The Select Board voted to approve the new personnel policy pending legal review, which has occurred but has not been revoted on.
So the old policy stands?
Okay.
Under Section 22, Number 1, elected officials are exempt from health care, but... Can you slip up to the mic?
Yes.
Sorry. However, on page six of Appendix B, "The Select Board is treating the position of the elected town clerk like an employee by putting increased salary and health insurance in the budget as line items rather than part of the Article Two in the warning."
Can I ask you to hold that question until we get to Article Three, the budget?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're still on Article Two, compensation. Any other questions, concerns? You ready to vote? All those in favor of paying the Select Board members an annual stipend of $650, the Board of Auditors a wage at the rate of $10.50 an hour, First and Second Constables paid a wage at the rate of $10.50 per hour, and the Board of Listers paid a wage at the rate of $10.50 per hour, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article Three, "Shall the town authorize collection of taxes on real or personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand or honored before Friday, November 8, at 5:00 p.m., or likewise postmarked, no later than Friday, November 9, 2018?" I don't know if I misspoke. Friday, November 9 is both of the dates. I would entertain a motion in that effect. Motion's made. Do I have a second? Any questions or concerns or discussion about when we're going to be collecting taxes? You ready to vote on that? All those in favor of the town authorizing collection of taxes by the treasurer, which are due in hand or honored before Friday, November 9, at 5:00 p.m., or likewise postmarked, no later than Friday, November 9, 2018, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Excuse me. Article Four, "Shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,903,000..." Article four, shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,903,000 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2019? The amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds. This is the, the budget vote. I need a motion in that effect. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? And I have a second. Okay. The figure's $1,903,000. If you take a look at financial statements, appendix B, what we're talking about is on page three through 15. If you look at the top of page 15, you'll see that figure in the middle column, $1,903,000. What is below that is, are the ballot items tomorrow, which results in, you can see, $1,975,960. What we're voting on tonight has nothing to do with those. We're voting on the total budget amount of $1,903,000. Okay. Questions? Please come up to the mic. Karen?
So we have to add $250 to the select board? I don't wanna lose after this. Look, we have five members, right?
That's true, five times 250 is 750. So you have to add 750.
No, I thought, that's gonna be a, just a point of order.
Can you do the math?
Is that? So, the motion is gonna be that the town appropriate the sum of $1,901,050 to defray the general highway and such. Who made that motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, you okay with amending your motion, just without going formal? Were you the second, Lon?
Yes.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Now that I've corrected the right number?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, now discussion? Questions of your select board? Yes, Holly?
I'm just.
Could you come back up to the mic, please?
Yeah, can you be close to it?
I just want clarification.
Kinda get close to it so she can pick it up.
The, the question I was asking was in regard to elected positions, which we're talking about now, but you directed me to the budget.
You're, you had reached a point where you had asked about the.
What personnel policy?
Personnel policy, and they identified the one that's in effect now.
Right.
You had read from it saying that.
Elected officials shall not be covered by insurance.
By that policy.
Mm-hmm. And we're talking about elected positions.
I need, I'm sorry, I need to back you up. Please bear with me. The, the policy, what does the policy state that, that you've raised?
The personnel policy is in regards to what employees shall receive, not, and it very clearly states, it doesn't apply to elected officials.
Okay.
Yes, the policy says, the, the personnel policy does not apply to elected officials.
The, shall not receive benefits.
No, it does not say that. It says the personnel policy does not apply to elected officials. It does not prohibit giving elected officials.
Individuals covered, except as provided elsewhere in this document. These policies and procedures cover all regular, full-time, and part-time, temporary, and probationary employees of the town of Shasberry. These policies and procedures shall not cover the following, and the first one is elected officials.
All right. What part of that policy or procedure are you raising?
Well, because we have, the elected officials are, are set to be insured, an in-elected official is set to be insured within the budget.
Yes, the policy. Okay. And, and you're, some, so, if, again, please bear with me. So somewhere in that policy, you're saying that it is, it's prescribed, it's forbidden. Can you read in there where it says that an elected official can't have health insurance? If I'm understanding you.
It, it, this policy is for employment, it talks about employment at will, a, a full-time employee, but all the policy, all the, it's, it's directed at employees, not elected officials.
Okay.
Elected officials shall not receive employee benefits.
Okay. I don't think that's what that says. I think it simply says they're exempt.
You point to me where, where you're.
I think it, it says that there are only, that, that applies to employees and anybody that's an elected official is exempt from that.
From this person, this three-page policy?
Yes.
Not the 10-page new one coming out.
Can you point to a part of the budget?
And on page six of appendix B, the, the elected official is being treated like an employee by putting increased salary and health insurance in the budget as a line item rather than part of article two on the morning. Why?
Tim, do you wanna address that?
Yeah, the policy does not prohibit giving health insurance to elected officials. It says that the personnel policy applies to employees, and it says that elected employee, that the policy does not apply to elected officials. It does not prohibit giving benefits to elected officials. We, the select board chose to give benefits to the town clerk because she's a full-time employee, and that's how you get health insurance, health insurance in America. It's not a right, it's a perk of employment. I would also point out that the previous clerk received health insurance. This board, in viewing that policy a year ago, decided we would take, we would take that out of, take that benefit away. We have subsequently decided that was a mistake and reinstated what was essentially the previous policy, which was that the, the town clerk got health insurance.
Holly?
I'm, so, so we're elected officials that are employees of the townspeople, are going to receive benefits through our town specific
The, the benefit package, the compensation to the clerk is not governed by that personnel policy. That's what that says. It's decided by the select board.
But the compensation last year was agreed upon by the voters, $28,000 was a set salary without insurance. And now, without bringing it back to the community, you're considering an elected official an employee.
They are bringing it back, it's in the budget, it's, it's on page six, so it's in the budget, so tonight is when it's being presented to the townspeople to act on, act on it one way or the other. Something that can happen here, if somebody wants to, and I'm not suggesting this, but, but if somebody wants to amend the budget, for instance, to pick on a certain line item and say, hey, the bank, or the office equipment leases are $3,000, I don't like that, I don't want you doing that, you can move to amend the budget by $3,000 and say to the selectmen, we don't want those office leases. The first part, you can amend the budget, $3,000, and alls it does is it does not line item, you cannot line item veto. The budget simply gets reduced, if it gets passed, simply gets reduced by $3,000, and it's up to select, the select board to figure out where all it's gonna come from. Yes?
Well, in the statement that she's reading, well, with anything that's listed, you have to have the positive and the negative. So they have the positive that says the elected officials shall not get insurance, but then it's supposed to say also that, oh, it depends on, there's no negative that doesn't say they shall not have insurance, so you could apply that to anything in the budget. If you're following me. Well, it's just saying, well, that doesn't mean what it says, that you can say the opposite, that they can elect to get whatever, insurances or salaries for themselves, next thing will be a town car.
I think that policy, correct me, Tim, but I think that policy doesn't address, that policy addresses employees, employment, it doesn't address elected officials. It's silent, it exempts the elected officials. Lon?
Okay. During my tenure, we adopted a comprehensive employment policy.
Lon, I'm, I'm sorry, could you come up to the microphone? This is pretty important.
So during my tenure on the board, the select board adopted a comprehensive employment policy. Cindy put in a lot of hours with Craig Bruder, and the idea was to provide some ground rules for how we deal basically with the highway crew, because they were our employees. We'd had a smattering of policies been adopted over years, some we weren't even following because they had been adopted so long ago and, and unfortunately forgotten and were inconsistent with current practice. So the employment policy was not to govern the entire town and everybody who volunteers or is an elected official, it was really aimed at the people who were full-time employees. So that's the first point, it was geared at people we were hiring through the road foreman to do highway maintenance. The second thing is that the policy is a document, a work in progress, in the sense that as we decided to change compensation or increase a line item for wages or benefits, how much we were gonna pay towards health insurance, that policy changed as we adopted new budgets and decided how much we were gonna pay for particular line items. So the fact that the policy said one thing when we adopted it didn't mean we were stuck in time, those policies were gonna be changed because the select board has the power to change its own policies. And so if they decide to go ahead and expand health insurance coverage to certain people who are working close to full-time or full-time, that was within the authority of the select board to do so, and we typically did not ask the town to vote on these things line by line. The other point that you mentioned was that we historically had paid health insurance for the town clerk because it was something that was needed. Now, the arrangement changed a year ago when the town clerk became an employee. I disagreed with the select board about not providing the health insurance, I think it's great that they're putting it back in. For one thing, it's gonna encourage qualified candidates to come forward and run for the office because it's something that we need. If we're expecting a healthy workforce, we've gotta provide them with insurance so they get the health care that they need. But I like the idea that we're now paying them a wage, but the point is, it's within the authority of the select board to offer that benefit if it's in the best interests of the town. And so I don't think they're violating any policy if they decide to extend that coverage. So I just wanted to provide a little history of how we got to this point in time.
Thank you, Lon.
Tom, I'd like to make a comment. The, the hours that the select, or the town clerk is putting in is more than what it was in the past. Because she's staying open some evenings to make it available for people to come in, she's up to 35 hours, which is by, if, if the state considers 35 hours a week as a full-time employee. We checked with V L T C, and the, yes, she is elected, but she could be considered an employee of the town at 35 hours a week. So we have checked with V T L, V L T C on this.
Mer?
I'm Merton Snow, I'm an elected official. I've been really confused reading articles and listening to discussions. An employee is someone you hire, not elected. The IRS says, the only reason that they talk about employees, elected officials, is because you have to withhold FICA tax, but the, the feds are silent after that. The state of Vermont Labor Department says elected officials are exempt. And I think we're getting on a slippery slope. The, you didn't hire an elected official, you're not supposed to be telling him what to do, you're not supposed to be telling him what hours to keep. We're doing everything that we should be doing, I think, in calling elected officials My office is open at least 35 hours a week, you can ask my neighbors that. So that means I could go before the board and get insurance.
You could ask for it.
I don't plan on it, but I could, and we may have others that will expand their hours so that they can be considered for insurance, and you guess who's gonna pay for that insurance? Out of your own pockets.
Mm-hmm. So, I think. Yes, based on the discussion, that's, that's correct.
I think that, that ought to be looked at very carefully before we finalize our policy.
Where is the money coming from that's going to?
You gotta state your name for the record, please.
Gabrielle Watson. My understanding, from what I've read in the banner and talking to some people, is that a lot of the cost of her health insurance and her wages is coming from income of things that she's doing in the town office. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's not adding, she, we're not taking away money, we're not paying the budget to do that, so that's correct, right? So I don't understand versus we're talking about other people being able to do the same thing? If she's getting money for the town in the town office and it's getting, covering her wages and her health insurance, then you can't compare other people that are employed or that are elected officials. So you're apples and oranges, am I correct? Okay.
Yeah, just as a reminder, the, the people of the town voted last year by Australian ballot to change the way the clerk is compensated from a small stipend and the clerk keeping the fees she collected, to paying her a salary and the town collecting those fees.
Mr. Lilly, yes?
Yeah, it's me again. I, I agree that you've gotta give her, the treasurer, or town clerk, her insurance because no matter who is in that spy, if you don't pay them something that they need, they're not gonna do a good job or they're not gonna wanna run. And Mer, we know you're on Medicare, or, yeah.
Strike that last part.
You know, I pulled out from the archives, I'm a paper saver, to the bane of my husband's, and when, back in 2005, we were talking about health insurance and the town clerk and the fees, and at that time, I got a copy from the treasurer's handbook in the area, and most of the larger towns. most of the larger towns in the whole community offered health insurance to their town clerk. Um, I think we really ought to all think about the first person we see when we walk into the town hall, when we first move into a town, when we get married, when we have a child, when someone dies and we need a death certificate, or we have to figure out where to bury someone. It is the town clerk. She is, or he, in the future, is the face of this town. And the fact that we are quibbling over something that she, in fact, is bringing the money in to pay for her position, um, I think is ridiculous, quite honestly. Um, you know, we're looking at what looks to me like a single-person plan of health insurance in this current budget. Um, yes, there, you have, have put in $4,000 towards a deductible. If you look at the actuals for, you can go back for as many years as we have been paying a portion of deductibles for our employees, for the, for the town clerk, that line item is almost never, never used to the full extent. Um, it is not abused in this town. I have never seen that. I was on the board for 10 years and I never saw it. So I just, I think this is, you know, just does not make the town look very good when we're quibbling over something like this.
Well, we're talking about fees, which I don't think they even enters into this whole discussion. I get a fee. I've collected 5.3 million for the town over the years, so I think I should be entitled to insurance.
We're talking about the budget. We can, uh, I don't want to get too far afield from it. Holly, yes?
I just want to make one point. I don't begrudge anybody healthcare insurance. However, last year, our town voted to give a $28,000 salary to the town clerk without insurance. Now, we, it is true, fees are collected, but the position of the treasurer or the, I'm sorry, the town clerk has moved from $28,000 to 43,298. As you say, there's fees collected, $41,000 worth. The town, when you moved to, from collection of fees to a salary, could have been relieved some, even if it's minimal in your eyes, tax burden. What we're doing is giving the tax relief back to an office without asking the townspeople if they would like to support it. That's my point.
Okay, other concerns, questions? Yep, up to the microphone, please.
Terry Stacy. Um, I'm not against, uh, insurance for anybody, uh, but I believe you, Tom, would know better than I remember. Back a lot of years ago, I think we voted on this right here in this floor about elected officials not getting insurance. We voted on it. So if you're going to take that away, you need to amend it. Back when my mother was alive, I, I remember it going on, had a big controversy over it. And it was because of the hours of the elected officials at that point.
And I think when-
You wouldn't know the date better than I would.
Well, boy, don't, I'm getting old. My memory's certainly not, not that good. Um, but the idea of the townspeople having an opportunity, that's tonight. It's being presented, um, to essentially, if that's the case, to essentially to make a change. Yep, yes, and that's what's happening again tonight. Other concerns or questions on that item or anything else on the budget? Yes, sir.
I believe that maybe back in the older days, they didn't have as many hours as there is nowadays. There's a lot of hours put into it, even performing weddings.
A salary is, is, you work the hours needed.
You need to, if, you need to come up to the microphone, please.
When granted a salary, you, you, an elected official makes their own hours. This position has had hours in the, in the amount of 25 for the past year. You work, you, you fit the needs of your community, you reach out at day, noon, night, maybe not when you have your 25 hours for community, but that's part of the job.
Tim, do you want to address the hours?
Um, the, the clerk of her own volition started opening the, the clerk's office up in evening hours, which was a great convenience for people who need to do clerk business, who work during the day. Uh, we saw this as a, an opportunity to increase that. We, uh, we would encourage the clerk and to, uh, to do that. We, uh, we can't tell the clerk, I don't believe, exactly how many hours to work, but we do control her salary. And so we believe if we asked the clerk to work 35 hours, 35 hours a week and offer to pay that, that she would do it, whoever it was.
Okay.
The clerk is now taking the responsibility of the cemetery commissioner's job. Mr. Conrad asked her to do the paperwork for that, is that true?
Holly?
That happened to be an employment opportunity for the town. I was one of, I was told there were four. The, um, obligation was three plus or minus hours a week. Maybe it's changed, adding seven to 10 hours to come to the threshold of the 35. It, the duties are recording the death certificates, filing important information, but it was mingled into the duties, they put the duties where they belonged.
All the way in the back.
I'd like to call a question on this budget item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, he's, uh, the motion's been made to call the question and I have a second. We're going to vote up or down, yea or nay. Excuse me for just one moment, if you would, please.
It's got to pass by two-thirds.
Okay, it's not a debatable motion. Uh, all those in favor of ceasing debate, we're not voting on the budget, we're voting on ceasing debate to move to the budget. All those in favor of ceasing debate debates, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the ayes have it. So now we're down, back to our main motion, which we're not going to debate anymore. All those in favor of the town appropriating the sum of $1,901,050 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2019, the amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the ayes have it and it is so ordered. Article five, to transact any other non-binding business as legally may come before said meeting at this time. We can, um, take no binding action. Uh, the floor is open for proposals, for questions with select board, so on and such.
Also, I have, uh, we can do this before or after this, I have a couple of comments about what's on the ballot tomorrow.
Okay, um, if you've got questions, uh, our, our select chair, select board chair has a bit of a presentation for the ballot article tomorrow. Um, I don't want to cut anybody off because his presentation might get made by people asking questions about stuff tomorrow. Yes? Can you come to the microphone, please?
Hello, um, my name is Jenny Rozicki, and it has been my distinct pleasure and honor to be your librarian in North Bennington. Um, I guess, uh, I would just like to say that this has been an exciting year at the library and that most of all, we've seen a more than 25% increase in circulation of items, um, and in a time of national and, and local declines in this one important statistic to libraries. Um, we have an excited and engaged group of people who use the library. Um, we, uh, let's see what else. Um, people are coming to the library for programs, all ages. Um, we have, uh, actually over 3,000 more people came to the library, uh, for programs than they did, uh, two or three years ago. Uh, I actually, after I submitted my report to the state about, how's your library doing? I actually received a phone call back going, are you sure? Like, what are you doing over there? Um, things are going very well in this department. Um, we, we are asking this year for $20,000 from the town, and this is merely to meet our operating expenses. Um, this is so we can provide those programs, so we can provide books and, um, other materials, access to our high-speed Wi-Fi, um, professional information services. Please come, ask me a question. I can find that book, uh, no matter how important or trivial it might seem, I can find it for you and I'm eager to help. Um, but yes, that's, that's about all I have, and I look forward to, uh, your support tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, you're now a resident of the town, right?
I am not. I'm a resident of North Bennington.
So her, her comments were traditionally, thank you, you go ahead, sit down. Traditionally, um, when we've been dealing with those appropriations, many times we ask somebody from one of the organizations to please come and make a statement. So that's kind of like an exception to somebody who's not an actual registered voter being able to speak. And Lindy, did you have, your arm was, your hand was kind of going up?
If, uh, if it was needed, I, I tend to come up and speak. I'm a Shasberry resident.
Can you come on up, can you come up to the microphone?
Who calls Shasberry?
And you are a Shasberry resident?
Yes. Yes, Lindy Lynch, Shasberry resident and, um, been on the board of the McCullough Library. And I just wanted to reiterate, I know that does look like a big number and a little bit shocking. Um, we did do a presentation to the selectors and we decided to go forward after going, with that number, after going to North Bennington and to the town, they're each giving us $24,000. The library is doing a great service and I just wanted to tally on that comment about the rescue squad. We know we cannot keep dipping into our endowment either. So I encourage everyone, and we have a great fundraising plan, and you, our children's librarian is doing great stuff. Would you like to-
Yes, I'm Nicole Hall. I am the children's librarian at the John G. McCullough Free Library, and we are doing so many wonderful programs. Please bring, tell everybody about it, bring everyone down, and we are seeing tons of numbers as far as our weekly story hour, we're seeing five to 10 families per, just on our Saturday morning story hour every week. Um, we see, um, we meet with the local head start in all the area, local daycares, providing books and story hours and services to them as well. And, um, we did our big solar eclipse event this summer, bringing in over 3,000 people to North Bennington, to North Bennington, and that's after giving out some of our glasses to some of the area local libraries as well, because we didn't want to be flooded with so many, so many people. Um, we did the Polar Express event, which next year will be being put into a much larger venue because we literally packed the kids, the parents, grandparents, where everyone was sitting on the floor, Santa was there reading stories. Um, it was a very, very exciting time. So next year, we hope to see everybody there, um, bringing someone or just coming to enjoy, enjoy the festive year. And hopefully have a train.
So we are asking for a lot, but we feel it's very well-deserved. Um, we need to keep the doors open and supplying this wonderful gem. Um, Shasberry doesn't have a library, and as Jenny said, we do have, a third of our people are Shasberry folks that are using that library, so I encourage you tomorrow to give us the support that we so need. And in addition to that, the board is actively working on a fundraising plan. We're not just asking you to, um, give us the check and the funding as the other. We are working on, um, the friends at the library are raising, um, funds through the, um, book sales. We're having a dinner at Pangia, you know, a full course dinner, and they're going to be donating back the proceeds to us, so we have a full, uh, fundraising plan in addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yes? I'm Merton Snow. I happen to be the president of the Local Grange. We've been around town here for 87 years. A lot of people don't know who we are, I know that. So I'll give you, this means the tax exemption we're asking for renewal, we've had this for several years. We're not the organization that we once were, we only have 30 members now, and our taxes would be $5,000. But we do, we're trying to do things for the community. Some of you have seen signs at the local cemeteries. They're very nice-looking signs, they're in every cemetery in town except right in the village, and I wish it was there. And as soon as the ground thaws, it will be there. And those are, uh, we spent $1,500 to do that, and we like to do things, and we hope if, if the town should say, maybe you could do this or that project, we'd like to do it. We're also trying, we, we had someone lined up, but then that fell through to redo the benches in front of the hall, cold hall, by the memorial, because the wood is in terrible shape. Rejuvenate those, use composite material that will last. But we, uh, and we give Words for Thirds, maybe some of you have heard of that. Your children or your grandchildren might have received them. The Shasberry Elementary School in North Bennington, we give third graders a dictionary that's called Words for Thirds, and we've been doing that for a number of years. In fact, I ran into a parent the other day and they, they said, oh, I think his boy now is in the sixth grade, he uses, still uses that dictionary. But we would appreciate, uh, a yes vote to that. And, and we being at the end of the line here in the book, I thought I might just tell you about this.
So you're talking about, um, the ballot article two tomorrow-
Yeah.
-that would be to exempt the, the Community Grange.
Right.
Um, uh, where's Community Grange?
You go out of Shasberry, the overpass, you look down on the left, you'll see, they used to call it the Red Brick School.
Red Brick School, yep.
And that big white building is the Grange Hall. We spent $34,000 on that in the last 10 years so that the little peep school could be there. We rented them, had a nominal fee.
Yep.
We're not getting rich from it, but we are supplying the downstairs, we redid the whole hall, new siding, new windows, to get it up to, uh, the fire marshal's standards. But that's paid for now. But as I say, if any of you, you know, you think of something, we might, project we might do, we, we don't have the physical power we once had as we're older.
Are you looking for new members?
Oh, yes, we're always looking for new members.
Okay.
I'm glad you reminded me.
Who would they contact? If somebody, a millennial in the audience wanted to see what goes on at the Grange, who do they contact?
I'm the president. You can contact me, Merton Snow.
Merton Snow, and you're in the book.
I sure am.
Okay. Thank you, Mur. Someone else under other business?
May I, may I speak on behalf of North Bennington Library?
You've already spoken, so you got to hang on for just a second. Yes, I'll get, I'll get you.
I'm Jennifer Scoggins and I wanted to direct people's attention to page 27, a nice long list of speeding violations. I walk my dog in our neighborhood and I, if you haven't gone out and walked between the hours of seven and eight in the morning and five and six in the evening, please do so. When you're walking on these little dirt roads and you have cars speeding past you, blowing dirt in your face, it's really unpleasant and it's kind of frightening. And I would just implore everybody, if you're driving on the little windy roads, please slow down for pedestrians and for bicyclists. It's, it's friendly, it's neighborly, it's really appreciated.
Is there somebody else? If there is anybody else, it's going to be Alice.
I've got somebody over there.
Yes, sir. I didn't say that out loud.
I'd like to read a statement, if it's allowed in their legal business, that will affect everybody.
Do you need the microphone?
Yep, come up, can you come up to the mic, please?
My name's Andrew Sherkey, captain, United States Naval Reserve, retired. The statement I'm about to read involves national security, which will affect everybody, including people of Shasberry. On October 22nd, 1962, President John Kennedy announced the discovery of missiles on Cuba, stating it shall be the policy of this nation to regard any nuclear missile launched from Cuba against any nation in the Western Hemisphere as an attack by the Soviet Union on the United States requiring a full retaliatory response upon the Soviet Union. The Cuban Missile Crisis was the first instance when a U.S. president was prepared to order a preemptive strike against a nuclear armed nation viewed as a threat to the United States. A second instance occurred when President Bush ordered a preemptive attack on Iraq, which he believed had nuclear weapons to be launched at the United States. A third instance was in 2008, when President Bush was prepared to order a preemptive strike against Iranian nuclear enrichment facilities. Each of the above facilities represents the failure of the policy of deterring a nuclear armed country from carrying out a nuclear attack on the United States. Although the United States and the Soviet Union had managed to tolerate each other's nuclear weapons for over 40 years, the Cuban Missile Crisis brought both governments to the brink of a nuclear holocaust. Thankfully, the crisis was peacefully resolved through direct negotiations between President John Kennedy and Soviet Premier Nikita Khrushchev. In the case of Iraq, the preemptive shock and awe assault carried out on March 20, 2003, reflected the Bush administration's decision to eliminate possible nuclear weapons held by Iraq. Currently, Secretary of Defense James Mattis and the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, General Joseph Dunford, the greatest threat to U.S. national security is the ongoing development and testing of nuclear weapons and long-range missiles by North Korea. Although both of these top military officers have argued forcefully for using diplomacy to address Kim Jong-un's nuclear ambitions, the military is quietly preparing, source, New York Times, edition, January 14, 2018, for a preemptive war they hope will never come. On January the 24th, 2017, House Bill H. 669 and Senate Bill S. 200 were introduced concurrently and were immediately remanded to the respective foreign relations committees. The purpose of both bills was to prohibit President Trump from authorizing a preemptive nuclear strike. It is imperative that our congressional delegation hears from us, urging them to do whatever is necessary to bring both bills to the floor for a vote. Signed, Andrew Sherkey, Will Miller, Green Mountain Chapter, Veterans for Peace. Thank you, sir.
Alice?
78% of both parents work in Vermont. The most dangerous time for our children is between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. Libraries are our safe haven for our children. North Bennington was that for me. I was raised by a single mom and my dad died in my youth. I spent afternoon after afternoon in the North Bennington Library. I strongly recommend we support that for our kids, especially today with the problem we have with drugs.
Thank you, Alice.
Hello, I'm Lynn Sternberg and I'm here with a group of, of Shasberry residents who we have worked on the 350 Vermont Resolution for Renewable Energy. And we were happy that with joint efforts, we were able to gather more than 180 signatures from Vermont residents with the required 154 signatures. So that indicates that people really are eager to see change with renewables. And tonight, we have five Shasberry residents who have very authentic experiences with this issue. And they have agreed to take a little bit of their time to come before you and share their experiences. And we have, the first person is Brad Peacock, who would like to speak. And afterwards, we have the, the person of, I know these names, but I haven't that, that familiar with them. He is Bill Christian. Yes, thank you, Bill. And Bill is an engineer in, in economic development. And we have the, the third and fourth person, people, we have our newcomers to Shasberry, that is Naomi Miller and Joan Doradoff. And lastly, we have a Shasberry resident who is a very longtime resident, who would like to share with, with you some of her real, authentic feelings about this issue of renewable energy, and that is Joan Levine. Thank you.
Okay, who wants to go first? Yes?
Well, first, we have Brad.
My twelve, my past 12 years farming here in Shasberry have been some of the most fulfilling of my life. Farming has taught me patience and just how unpredictable growing food can be, especially when it comes to weather. Growing up here and working the land, I have been on the front lines of climate change, which continues to have real-life consequences, not only for my livelihood, but also for the future of our economy. We all have experienced the change in weather patterns from predictable to more extreme. According to the U.S. Global Change Research Program, Vermont is already seeing a 25% increase in severe precipitation events and is warming faster in winter than any other area in the U.S. I have witnessed this from the erosion in our fields to the insects and diseases that have exploded over this past decade, making it harder and harder to farm without the use of fungicides and pesticides. For the second year in a row, we had to till under our entire crop of Brussels sprouts due to an aphid infestation that would have been unheard of five years ago. Because of the warmer-than-normal fall, our entire late-season broccoli planting went past before we could harvest it to give out to our CSA members. Furthermore, we have stopped growing raspberries because of a new species of fruit fly that lays its eggs inside the fruit and ruins the berries when hatched. Again, this species did not exist in Vermont just five years ago. And the fear for many farmers and researchers is, the blueberries may be the next crop to suffer the same fate. These are just a few examples of the consequences the agricultural, agricultural sector is facing due to climate change. Those of us who work outside and are active in the outdoors know one of our greatest health threats in Vermont is from tick-borne diseases. When I was a kid, I used to spend hours outside playing and hunting and never had to worry about being bitten by a tick. Now, every time we walk out the door and into our fields or woods, there is a fear of contracting Lyme disease or worse. Almost every person I know has fallen sick with some tick-borne illness, including myself, and this is the beginning to seriously affect how we interact with our environment. Outdoor tourism and local food systems are an integral part of the Vermont economy and both are being threatened by the enormous challenges we face with a rapidly changing climate. Climate change is real and we must do everything within our power to combat the effects of it here on the local level, as well as state, country, and worldwide. Acknowledging it exists so we can help stop and reverse the effects is imperative to our survival as a species. There is no planet B. To continue this path of inaction is not only dangerous to our local and state economy, it is a risk to our national security, infrastructure, future generations, and is an abdication of our responsibility and leadership as the adults in the world. As part of this community, who will hopefully be here in 40 years, I do not want your kids, grandkids, or my nephew to ask why we didn't do something when we had the opportunity to make a difference. Why, in the face of overwhelming evidence, we stood idly by and watched the slow destruction of our planet while having the resources and knowledge to change course before it was too late? Please support this important resolution for all generations. Let us come together as the adults in the room and be proud that we stood up and in the very least moved our town forward together. Thank you.
I'm Bill Christian. I'm asking my fellow Shasberry residents to take a stand for the environment. Tonight, the ballot, the 350 ballot, with the 350 ballot, we can join with dozens of other Vermont towns and send a message and a pledge that we, that we will stand and protect our one and only world. We'll do that by adding renewable power, not by adding natural gas pipelines and power plants and other fossil fuel facilities. We'll do it by meeting periodic goals, since we know what can happen when there's just a single deadline at the very last minute. And we'll do it in a way that's fair to all. It also asks that we, that we pledge to use less energy here in Shasberry and that we support and promote renewable energy right here in our own backyard. This issue is very important to me. I am inspired by the individuals, small towns, cities, and entire countries all over the world that have thrown themselves into this task, to create a society that will roll along, growing better for the children of each new generation, instead of a society that will burn itself out in a few wild and unthinking generations. Impressive progress has been made, but we are not making it fast enough and it's a race against the clock, because the damage that we do every day cannot be undone. So let's take this step together and show that Vermont is doing its share and more as it always has. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joan Dornhofer and I've been in Shasberry about a year now, having left the town of Waywayanda in southern New York State due to fracked gas burning power plant being put up three miles from our house and due to the pipeline and compressor station that was put up with it. We were more than 30 years in our house and we had planned to age in place. Waywayanda is a working-class area. Most people work two or three jobs, are busy raising kids, have some long commutes, some are busy farming, as it's the famous black dirt region of the Hudson Valley where onions come from. People are busy, they feel like they don't have time to find out what's going on in their town and there's no annual meeting such as this. Like our neighbors, we didn't know that the gas infrastructure was being planned for our town. We grew our gardens, we gradually renovated our old farmhouse. Then in January 2015, I read a flyer about the power plant in the local school where I worked. It was talking about a rally against something called CPV. We didn't know what that meant. We attended the rally and then began to learn about fracked gas and the infrastructure around it. We began organizing informal town meetings to let people know. We organized a local picket line at the building site to let people driving by know what was happening. We spent a year and a half of Saturday mornings on that picket line, watching as the plant was built behind us and the wetlands and the fields paved over and the bat and the eagle habitat destroyed. Our group brought a lawsuit against the power plant company, but it was too late to mount a meaningful legal argument. The case would have had a good chance if all the people had known in time. This is not natural gas. I'm talking about fracked gas from Pennsylvania that runs through big pipelines, carrying not just methane, but also volatile chemicals used in the hydro fracking extraction process. I have expert testimony offered in our lawsuit by Cornell's Anthony Ingrascia, Professor of Geological Engineering, and Robert Hallworth, Professor of Climate Science, about the chemicals in the fracked gas, the impact on air quality and ozone depletion. And I can email anyone who would like to read it, joandornhofer@gmail.com, please email me. Pipelines leak and they explode. Nothing grows on top of them because the actual earth around them gets too hot. Compressor stations are needed on these pipelines every 30 miles to keep the gas from expanding too, too far. This is not the old-fashioned clean, dependable, natural gas of years ago. Those living near compressor stations, including many people I know, have developed migraines and asthma and studies are now linking compressors, compressor stations with autism. A war was fought and won in Vermont to keep a pipeline from being put under Lake Champlain, but there's another pipeline now that's running from Heinsburg into Middlebury. Let's do our part in Shasberry to keep pipelines out of southern Vermont. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Naomi Miller, live in Shasberry and I came here with Joan in 2016. We wouldn't presume to speak as such newcomers at a town meeting if we didn't have personal experience with this issue and it is very painful, personal experience. I'd intended to be taken out of our old farmhouse feet first, but living where you can't go outside without getting asthmatic symptoms when you're not asthmatic and where crop production is reduced by at least a third, just doesn't seem like living. And that's what happens from power plants that burn fracked gas. Let's not let anything like that happen here. New York State has a ban on fracking. This makes people feel safe and it's easy to forget that the ban doesn't ban pipelines and power plants that carry and burn fracked gas. It's easy and it's pleasant to think it can't happen here. It's easy and it's pleasant to think it can't happen here. And in the Addison Gas, the Addison Gas Pipeline runs from Califor, California, from Canada, right down to Middlebury. And in Heinsburg, Vermont, two members of the Select Board, I do not in any way mean to cast dispersions on select boards, this is about human beings, not select boards. But in Heinsburg, as I understand it, two members of the Select Board made a secret deal with Vermont Gas, allowing a pipeline to run under a town park in exchange for money donated to the town. And by the time the rest of the Select Board and the citizens found out, the deal was on. This is what happened to the tune of $8 million, a bit more, in Waywayanda, New York, where the planning board brought in a power plant without offering it up to the public for a vote. And they got $8 million, which covered one year of the school budget. The people are fighting the pipeline up and down the northern part of this state, but right now, that pipeline is running to Middlebury, and it's dangerous every foot of the way. Next up on its line is the third phase that would run from Middlebury to Rutland. They're working on that right now. This is an emergency. This is an emergency here and now. Rutland is very close. You can't say it can't happen here. Three years ago, not enough people stood up against the power plants and pipelines in our old town in New York. Now, the power plant is standing, and while they wait for their pipeline to be dug to bring the fracked gas from Pennsylvania, they're burning diesel, which is spreading ash and fumes for a thirty-mile radius. Now, hundreds and hundreds of people are writing letters to local officials, begging them to have the power plant closed, which now they can't do, because everywhere the diesel ash is landing, there will soon be toxic particulate matter from the combustion of fracked gas, which is stuff you can't smell, you can't feel, you can't see. Now, people are planning class action suits based on the loss of value in their properties because whole roads of houses are up for sale. This happens so quickly, it's really hard to describe. I mean, in 2015, none of us knew that that power plant was planned. Now, people realize that their cows, their chickens, their horses, their sheep, their goats, and their children are outside in what's becoming poison air. But in Waywayanda, New York, it's too late. Here, it's not quite too late. In Waywayanda and in Heinsburg, no one had a chance to vote on whether pipelines and power plants came into their towns. But here, we have a chance to vote on it, and I hope you won't all let that chance go by. The pipeline that was proposed for under Lake Champlain was defeated, but there are all these other proposals in the works, including a power plant, much like the one we are closely attuned to, that they hope to put in Keene, New Hampshire, that would be fed, perhaps, by the Northeast Direct Pipeline that they've been trying to put through Massachusetts, which would run right along the border with Vermont. So we would be here, right between the Northeast, the Northeast Direct and the Addison Pipeline. People have a hard time believing the corporations would do something that might have a harmful effect. But here, I'm trusting everyone knows what happened to the water in Bennington and North Bennington and Husick Falls because of the Teflon Plant. I'm hoping that it's not like Waywayanda, New York. In Waywayanda, New York, a town official told me she knew the power plant would be safe because it was being put in by a company that puts up power plants around the world, so they must know what they're doing. I said they might not care if the power plants hurt people as long as they make money. And she said something that has, will never leave my consciousness. She said, "If I thought corporations would do things that were going to endanger us, I wouldn't be able to get out of bed in the morning." I mean, you can think of it as funny, but it's very understandable, right? That it's very, very hard to bear this fact. Corporations are very powerful. They buy off town planning boards in New York, and they buy off select boards in Vermont. And they don't care about us. We have to protect ourselves. And the resolution coming up tomorrow is a simple and direct way to start doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more. The resolution she was, go ahead. The resolution she was referring to is actually Article One, which is a ballot article tomorrow. Seven. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm Joan Levine, and I've lived in the North Bennington-Shaftesbury community since 1949. I just am here to ask that you listen to what's been said tonight and truly think about it. I've thought about my life, and it's been almost entirely centered around the children of these communities. I've been Girl Scout leader from Brownies through Seniors. I assisted Ava Switman at the 4H for many happy years. I was head of the Jiffy Ski Program, Transportation for Miss Corcoran. I was head of the BTA. I had President of the Girl Scouts. I don't know anything I didn't do. If they needed to volunteer, I was there. And all I'm asking is for you to think about the beautiful children that we have. And I also was on the School Board for fifteen years, representing Shaftesbury, and I also was with the Vocational Board for twenty-four and a half years. I really love children, and I think they are our treasure. And this is real. My business was as a Human Resource Manager in three plants in Bennington. We closed two of them. I worked with the late Jean Audie as a volunteer for the state of Vermont, closing Johnson Controls. You can't believe what corporations can and will do, and you have the future of our children in your hands. I'm going to be ninety in September, and there isn't much more I can do, but you can. Please.
Well, actually, my last part was going to be to explain what's on the ballot tomorrow. And I think the speakers that have just spoken have explained those two articles better than I would, so I think I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Tim. Now's an opportunity for questions of the Select Board about anything that's going on in the town, about our articles tomorrow. Yes, sir. Up to the microphone, please.
I'm Alan Baker from Shaftesbury. And my biggest problem with everyone just spoke, all the things in this article, ask nothing of individuals, ask no one to do anything on their part to conserve energy. It's up to the government. It's like, the town should do this, the town should do this. Nothing asking, "How about everyone put up a clothesline? What a way to save energy." And put a clothes rack in your house. Inconvenient, yes, but it's not up to the government to fix this problem. If every person that's going to vote yes for this tomorrow puts up a clothesline, puts up a clothes rack in their house, and makes a concentrated effort to dry all their clothes that way, you could eliminate a lot of power plants. But it seems like a lot of people don't want to be inconvenienced to change their lifestyle. They want someone else to do it, as in the Apple Hill Project downtown in Bennington. We don't want power, we don't want solar panels where we can see them. Put them someplace else, but don't inconvenience me. We don't want big wind towers, because they kill birds and bats, but don't inconvenience me with higher rates. It's like, all energy production is nasty. Pick your poison. There's so many dams in Bennington that we could be using, but the state puts roadblocks up for using hydro, because there's people in Maupeli who want to remove every dam in the state. Same thing with windmills, solar, hydro, all this renewable. There's people against it everywhere you turn, yet they may be signing this tomorrow because this looks nice, but it doesn't ask them to do anything. It's time to ask people to do stuff and not the government, because they just screw stuff up. I would, I did not sign the petition when they're in Shaftesbury doing this, because it didn't ask me to do anything. It's asking you guys to ban stuff, asking governments to do stuff. Start asking individuals to change their lifestyle, let it affect their lifestyle, their quality of life. Make them change, then I'll sign on to this stuff.
Thank you. Floor's open. Oh, boy. You've had enough? I can't do anything unless I get a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, seconded. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you all very much. Please be safe going home.